This is Thursday, May 30th, 2019. I have Councilor Capone.
Yeah.
And Councilor Del Sol.
Yeah.
I have Councilor DeFlorio.
Yeah.
And Councilor DePerro.
Yeah.
And Councilor Healan.
Yeah.
Councilor MacKay.
Yeah.
I have Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Councilor Napolitan.
Here.
And Councilor Smith.
Yeah.
Nine members present, we do have a call.
Please stand and salute the flag, please.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the item on the agenda is a resolution by Councilor McGlaughlin that the administration consider the idea of a 24-hour parking sticker enforcement for what's one in six due to casino patrons possibly taking up residential parking spots.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see a very helpful packet of information that I think that Sergeant Gaff and Captain Landry would like to go through with us and then ask some questions after that if that's possible. Sound okay to you guys? Perfect.
Just I guess, when you speak, just announce your name and your position, please. Thank you. Flip. All right. That's it. See, I've never been on TV, so. All right, well, good evening. Thank you for having us here. I'm Captain Paul Landry. I'm the Operations Division Commander, and I brought Sergeant Joe Gaff, who we all know who runs the Traffic Division. So we've included a packet here, and we'll walk through them and kind of talk about what we've been working on in relation to parking, particularly focusing on Lower Broadway. But we do know that that's going to expand to a greater portion. We have a plan for that. So what we've included here first is, just for your information, is this Lower Broadway parking lot that's going to be run by the city. Approximately 700 parking spaces. That'll be a pay status. The city is, I believe, subcontracting that to someone who will run it. In addition to that parking lot, there is a ride-share parking lot that's kind of on the lower right, and that has enough parking spaces for about 100 ride-share vehicles to park and post waiting for pickups in the area. So the next slide, let's talk about the parking on Lower Broadway. So we have some restrictions that we're going to put in place. For instance, on Bow Street, there's not going to be any parking from Broadway to Thorndike. On Mystic Street, there'll be no parking. And one of the reasons we decided no parking on Mystic Street is that's the cross-through for people to either park in the municipal lots or for the ride-shares to move down and go to the ride-share lot coming from the casino. So we wanted to ensure that there was free flow of traffic in that area, and that'd be no vehicles on either side to eliminate any possibility of some sort of collision. Line Street, the north side of Line Street, will be Lower Broadway resident parking only. And we'll talk about the resident parking program in a couple of slides. On the south side of Line Street, we're going to allow parking for up to two hours for any other resident sticker that perhaps wants to go to the casino and maybe go grab dinner, see a show, or go gambling for a little bit. So they'll be able to park there for two hours free of charge. And then, of course, some other restrictions. Beecham Street will have no parking. Robin Street will be no parking. And Dexter Street will be no parking. And primarily, those are now DOT traffic routes, Sarge?
Yes.
So that's one of the reasons of those. In addition, for the opening sessions of the casino, Thorndike Street between Broadway and Bow Street will be closed, and that's primarily is where the city's or the police department's mobile command center will be located for the first, potentially, two weeks. And then Washburn Street, which is that small street at the backside of Mike's Roast Beef, we want to make sure traffic moving up Bow Street doesn't decide to avoid the lights and try and come out on the Broadway, creating a traffic hazard. So the DPW is going to close that down for us. Our next slide, please, is just some examples of some of the new signs that, most of them have already been created. We have a resident sticker parking-only signs. We've got some signs that have been set up for two-hour. We've got no parking completed. We've got some business-related parking signs for some of the commercial businesses down there. And both Jay and Sergeant Gaff have been going, walking the area, speaking with the local businesses, determining which areas are appropriate for commercial businesses for folks to park at. So next slide. So let's talk about Lower Broadway. We're starting this resident pilot parking, pilot parking plan. It will be local residents only. There'll be some commercial parking locations, and again, Sergeant and Jay are working that, and they're meeting with all the businesses to find out what their needs are. In addition, I mentioned this earlier, on Line Street, there'll be two-hour parking. So if you're an Everett resident and you want to go down, you can park on Line Street for two hours and free of charge. It's a nice gift to give to the residents. For Lower Broadway residents only, it will be a black-colored parking sticker, and again, Lower Broadway residents only. It's a pretty easy swap. It's actually happening right now, is you come into City Hall, you give them your old resident sticker, they give you a new resident sticker. And in addition, with each resident sticker, we're giving them a visitor pass. Next slide. So the visitor pass. Each resident sticker is going to get one visitor pass. These will be issued annually. Wasn't sure how to say this, but the easiest way to say this is that if I'm a Lower Broadway resident and I've got someone coming to visit me, I give them my visitor parking pass. And they can park out on the street, they can leave, they can come back park. But we put this 72-hour period on it that if somebody decides to give their friend a resident pass, that vehicle cannot stay in place for more than 72 hours. So we don't want people leaving vehicles on Lower Broadway. Now, again, it can come and go as a visitor, but we don't want someone giving out a pass to somebody just abandoning a vehicle in that location. We are working on a system for businesses in the area, for some sort of employee parking area. And one of our thoughts, which we will have resolved before we kick all this off, is potentially a restricted visitor pass system for employees that will allow employees of businesses that are still in the area to park between a certain time period when the business is open, so they won't get tagged and towed in the area. Next slide. So moving ahead, the good news is the new parking stickers are ordered, they're in, and they are being issued. Letters have been mailed out to all the Lower Broadway residents. There was a Traffic Commission meeting that was done on the 15th. And like I said, the sticker exchanges have been ongoing since May 20th, so it will continue. We will be ramping up a social media and a newspaper notification system, and we'll be working with the mayor's office to ensure we get as much information out as possible so that people understand the process. This new parking program, Lower Broadway only, will begin on June 1st, which was approved at the May 15 Traffic Commission meeting. However, we won't start any enforcement activity until the 3rd of June on Monday. And we've got really this phased into three pieces. From June 3rd to the 14th, we're going to be sending out warnings and flyers, so we will not be tagging and towing, but we'll be issuing warnings to those vehicles that are parked illegally. So it's kind of like a two-week education system. So in case we miss somebody, because it's potentially, or potential that we may have missed somebody. So we're going to give them two weeks. Starting on June 15th through the 20th, we're going to tag, but not tow. And now that fee has increased to $50 for that violation. So that's actually more expensive than it would be to park in the pay parking lot down on Lower Broadway. And that's the reason we set that fee higher, as an incentive that, "Don't park here, go park in the pay lot, it'll be cheaper for you." And then, starting on the 21st, which is Friday night before the casino opens, we'll be tagging and towing any vehicles that are in violation. And again, we will revise and evaluate and continue to develop the program, see where it's going. One of the questions that we talked about among ourselves is, "What happens if I'm a Lower Broadway resident? For some reason, I keep missing everything." Well, if you get a ticket from us and you can walk into the parking clerk's office and say, "Listen, I'm a Lower Broadway resident, I got this ticket," we're going to recommend that they waive the fee and get their parking sticker updated at that point in time. Now, I know there's a couple of things that Joe has done with the businesses that you want to talk about.
So with the businesses, myself and Mr. Martin have been going down to see exactly how many employees are there. So we've been walking down there, talking to the businesses down there. There's still quite a few businesses down there, and we're trying to help them out because they're the ones that got really affected by all the construction down there over the last couple of years. So we're really trying to be sensitive to their needs. Most places just need four or five employee parking down there. But the nice thing is, a lot of these folks didn't have their work trucks or trucks registered in Everett, and checking with the parking clerks downstairs, we've actually started getting vehicles registered in Everett, which is nice, you know, the business trucks here. There's still some issue with trucks that are not allowed to park overnight because of the commercial motor vehicle law that we have on ticketing, so that will still stay in place. But we felt that the new visitors' pass restriction would be the easiest way to go for them right now. And with the help of the clerks downstairs, we'll continue making a list of how many they need. You know, if they have 15 employees, we can't give them 15 parking spots, we know that. So we're trying to work with them as best we can. We'll give what they need to the parking clerks downstairs, and then, just a little favor to them, I'll bring the parking passes down to the companies to help them out, to get them underway. And they're very excited to see something going. They're enthusiastic. We were a little nervous about what the price of the ticket, but they were really excited knowing that, why the captain explained, we went higher. And they understand it's a flexible program right now, and it's a pilot program that we're kicking out, and they're all on board down there. And it's been a good experience with them so far, the last couple of weeks. So that's how it's going to work out for the next week or so. And we've met with most of the businesses, and we have a few more that we still have to touch back with. But it's an ongoing process that we keep working with, and we'll have it all worked out when we need to be in the next week or so.
Thanks. So if you want to move on to the next slide, as we kind of move forward and continue to develop the process, we looked at some other parking issues that are generally outside the Lower Broadway area. For instance, I know the city has already posted along Air Force Road, no parking, so vehicles aren't going to park down there when they're heading down to use the River Green lot and decide to park somewhere else. We're going to be putting some signs on Lewis Street that say no casino parking signs down there. This question had come up, and the answer to this is, the Bat Yard at this point will not be getting resident stickers, nor will they be issued visitor passes. And then, of course, as part of the continuous evaluation, we will be doing hotspot monitoring that will be handled by our traffic personnel, our parking enforcement officers, as well as traffic specialists from Nelson and Nygaard, who are going to help us monitor these hotspots. And some of those are the Village area, Tremont Street, areas that will be surrounding the drop-off and pickup of the Silver Line, which you've got the brief on Tuesday night that will be running from Chelsea through Everett and to the casino. And then, any other areas that we identify either through evaluation or input from members of the council, that these are areas you want us to monitor to see if there's increased traffic, so that if we need to, as part of a further phase of development, look at resident parking specific in other areas of the city based off of our hotspot evaluation. Next slide. So we couldn't have done this ourselves. Certainly a collaborative effort. Much thanks goes to the Everett Traffic Commission.
Which are here tonight.
Who are here tonight, thank you. Our transportation and planning folks, who have been extremely helpful, our parking enforcement officers, the parking clerk and staff, Sergeant Gaff has nothing but...
The girls and the staff, they have been tremendous, tremendous help with just running ideas, because they work with it every day. And, you know, we go in, we ask them sometimes what's the best way for them to deal with it. And then, the input that the ladies downstairs have had have been extremely helpful, and they've actually helped us streamline some things. So they've been extremely helpful with this whole combination of people working together, so it's been great.
And then, of course, Public Works, putting up all the signs for us, they continue to do that?
If I may, Tommy Goldin's here. I mean, he might be the busiest guy in the next couple of weeks. He's the man that's been putting up the signs, getting all the anchors in the ground, working with SPS and St. Louis and Kevin Newden. And I mean, Tommy, I thank you for everything you've been doing for me and talking six, seven times a day, meeting, walking, and Tommy's been a real big help, and that's why we asked him to be up here tonight, so he gets a little recognition. You know, sign guys don't get much recognition putting signs up, but the effort that he's done, I mean, it's been unreal, and thank you, Tommy.
And of course, Delson and Nygaard are our local partner, and of course, the mayor's office, because he's given us his guidance and let us run with this. And the next slide, we've given you both my and Sergeant Gaff's email address, our office numbers. I left my business card on all the desks. If you have specific questions, particularly post this meeting, that you'd like answered, we are always available to speak with you, either Joe or myself. We will make ourselves available. I would say it would make it easier for us if you have specific questions, if you sent them via email to us, and that way we can articulate the question and I'll come up with an appropriate, timely answer for you. So other than that, that's all we have for you, and we'll answer questions as appropriate. Councilor McGlaughlin, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have a few questions to either the gentleman that want to answer them, but the Lower Broadway area obviously sounds like you guys have paid a lot of attention to that area, and which you should rightfully so pay attention to. How many houses are left down there that are impacted by these changes? Because I believe Encore, Wynd Resorts bought a lot of property on those side streets and that whole area, correct?
So we sent out 179 letters through the assessors' office. We went down, we got every, obviously, there was more businesses and houses and lots there that Encore owns, so we only sent one to them. But we sent out, 179 letters were sent out to the folks in that Lower Broadway area. That's businesses, that's homeowners. So, you know, there could be more people there because you have six families or three families down there. We send it to the owner of the house, that's the way we can do it. As of right now, 179 was done. We estimated roughly about, there was 364 stickers that were issued up to that point with the old blue stickers, and there's three handicap spots in Lower Broadway area. So that is the stats that we went by. So that's what we did for that point so far.
How many individuals have come in to change out their stickers to date?
Today, as of today, I think we were up to about mid-'70s.
Seventy-plus.
Yeah, so it's pretty good for the first week, you know, first and getting the word out.
And I agree wholeheartedly. I just, I have a major concern, and we've talked about this, Sergeant, you and I have talked many times on the phone about this. Lower Broadway is going to be isolated now. Cars aren't going to be able to park there, it's clear. So where are these cars going to go? We heard from Mr. Folk the other night that 2,000 to 3,000 cars an hour projected on the first weekend or in days leading beyond that. They're not all going to park in these lots. They're going to find the easiest and cheapest way to park, and that's going to be Village, Parkway, Lewis Street, the area off of there, and then extend down Main Street and into the neighborhoods, because it's only a five or 10-minute walk. And at that point, it's easier and cheaper than paying $50 or $40 to park in the parking lot. So I really had hoped that the Traffic Commission and yourselves would have looked at the Main Street section of the city. That's what I had originally asked for in February, was that we could get down to working together to create a pattern of how to stop this from happening, because I think that June 23rd and the days beyond are going to be an absolute disaster for that neighborhood. Because Lower Broadway, you can't park, so you're going to go to the next zone, if you will. The next zone is Main Street and the Parkway. If you draw a line there, then you go up to Broadway and the streets beyond City Hall and that area. Why aren't we looking at putting signs up and putting residential parking sticker program? 24-hour residential parking sticker program? I know some of the breweries down the village were concerned about those parks, but a lot of people take Uber and Lyft to those breweries and use other car-sharing apps to be able to get to the breweries down there. And if we don't need it, then we rule it out. You don't have to keep it out there, you can do it as a 30-day trial period and see what happens in 30 days. But I'm just not sure where the...
Okay. So we share your concern. I mean, I think we all agree that there's going to be other hotspots in the city that are going to bubble up as this rolls out. And a couple of things I want to speak to on that. One is, you know, as Jim Folk alluded to, the parking, River Green is going to be much, much cheaper, and at Wellington, and at the other satellite parking, it's going to be $7, not $50. And each of those lots is going to have the amenity of a shuttle to the casino. So, while I'm not going to say it isn't going to happen, that somebody's going to park on Tremont Street or on Main Street, it's still a decent walk. It's about a mile, really, from any of those points to the casino. There's going to be some folks who may choose to do that, may be able to do that, but I think the incentive of the $7 parking with a shuttle should deter a lot of it. The other thing, too, is I think, you know, we all agree that that first weekend, those first couple of weeks, things are going to be tough. We don't want to put in place regulations that are going to hamstring us based on those first few weeks, that are then very difficult to roll back later. And I appreciate your point that you could always roll it back, but that's a harder thing to do than to put something in place. So from our perspective, let's see where the problems happen. Joe and Paul have done a fantastic job, I think, on a very timely basis of pulling together this pilot program. And Joe's got a great relationship with the folks down the village, working with the school down there and all those issues. I think if it becomes an issue in those first couple of weeks and we need to deal with it, we can deal with it very quickly. That said, you know, a lot of the effort that Joe has described, going to the businesses, going to all the other users of these neighborhoods, because it's not just residents, right? I mean, down the village, you've got the breweries, you've got the climbing gym, a lot of the folks. It's a very sticky process to accommodate everybody's needs. So...
We have appeared, we have appeared to make Main Street meter parking, to make streets off of Main Street, 24 resident parking. We have the ability to put those signs up within hours.
And I'll ask you, Mr. Mayor, why can't we do it today and start to get ahead of this instead of being reactive, be proactive to this problem? You've lived in the city your whole life. I bet you can without question agree that that area is going to get hit pretty hard the first weekend after opening. Carter Street, Hawthorne Street, West Street, all those streets right there?
I think you may see an issue when the bike path is connected to the casino from West Street, when that is built and designed, it's right now it's in design, when that is built, you will be able to walk from any street off of Main Street on the bike path. People will know about that. So we did engage Nelson and Nygaard to do a study of Main Street area. You also have to recognize there are a lot of businesses on Main Street, and to go, if we were to go resident parking, that would affect their businesses. So we're looking at, we have the boxes to put the meters in, we could put those meter boxes in within a week. I don't want to meter Main Street, because there are residents who live on Main Street. We could still put the meters in, allow resident stickers, be allowed to park in meters free of charge. So we just want to, we want to see if people are going to do that. If that is the case, within, you know, I think within hours, we can make it resident parking only. I mean, we could put a sign on the top of each street and the bottom of each street that specifies that and immediately pass out, you know, those same coupons, passes that we give it to other residents down the Lower Broadway area. A lot of that came from me. We got the extra pass, the Lower Broadway sticker. So, you know, I have, we will be all over it. These gentlemen know we're going to be over it. Jay's been instructed to be on-site under that area for opening for the first few weeks. We'll be engaging the residents, so residents that can tell on us that their spaces are taken up. I don't see it now, but I do see it in the good months when we do have that bike path connected, especially we'll have bike docking stations down there. You may see residents, you know, and especially as we promote it, people will probably see that. So we're prepared. We're just going to, you know, there are a lot of business owners on Main Street, there's a lot of residents on Main Street, there's a lot of residents in the side streets. Right now, I don't believe that they will be all in favor of it, but if it becomes an issue, I mean, we do have issues now with people who take the train, the bus in that park on side streets. I see...
It happens on my, and I live on a private way, a dead-end private way. And it happens, it happens every day, I come home and there's a car, too, on my dead-end on Barham Place.
So we'll be able to, we'll rectify that situation. I know there's some parents that do it at St. Anthony's School, unfortunately, that they park their vehicle and take their bike into Boston. So we're pretty, you know, listen, we get it, opening year, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of congestion, a lot of traffic. That will wind down.
And I agree, there'll be a lot, and we can't stop that from happening. We agreed on that one, we agreed for Encore to come into Boston, Everett, we agreed that there was going to be. But I think this is something that we could help the residents by getting ahead of the curve and be able to put this plan in place now and not be reactive.
If that's something the city council wants to take a vote on, doing something, make it all resident parking off of Main Street, we'll be glad to do that.
And then, talk about Main Street, and then talk about what you do with the businesses and the meter spots, but I think the side streets...
I mean, we're prepared to do a bunch of different things, you know? We have gone through all these different scenarios. Meters, stickers, parking meters.
I've been walking the streets the last few nights, I've been walking the neighborhoods, and I'm hearing every door I knock on.
And what are they saying? They're...
They're talking about, "How am I going to park when I come home at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock to come home from work? If I come home during my lunch break, where am I going to park to be able to come?"
So we can easily put signs up on Main Street immediately if that becomes an issue, that it's resident parking only, 24/7, and we'd have to have a conversation with the business owners.
We know how bad the Village is now. We were all at the Shovel Club meeting.
So we're not jumping the gun now. There is, I think there is, and Encore is doing a good job of not letting patrons come once the garages are full. I mean, they have, I think you've seen it, the message boards, they'll have all throughout the state, I mean, all up to Route 1, and telling people that lots are full, don't come. I mean, they're, so, you know, there's going to be, there's a good communication going, and I know Officer Gaff and Captain Landry can speak to you a little bit better about that with the state police and the gaming unit and so forth, but there is a good...
And the lot that's in the Village on River Green Way, when, I was against it at first because I didn't want 625 cars to flood the Village and park down there and utilize that fully. And we, Councilor Capone and I actually met with Wynd at their office in Medford, and they had told us that they were going to skyrocket the price so that they would stop people from wanting to park in that lot, and I wouldn't want it to be...
That's an employee-only lot, though. That's an overflow, that's a...
No, it's a community lot.
A community lot, I'm sorry. It's a community lot, right?
So it's a community lot. And now I'm hearing that they're only charging low-dollar price for the lot, when they assured us that they would charge high price, so that, you know, they built this beautiful park right next to a 625-car parking lot. May, you have young kids, my colleagues have young kids, I can imagine that they don't want to bring their kids down to this beautiful park and these beautiful arenas with 625 cars that are going to be driving around this area. And this parking lot now has become this main attraction to their parking plan, when it was totally a different laid-out idea before other boards and commissions in the city. And when we met with them in their Medford office, they ensured us that this would not be the case, that it was, started out as an employee lot, then it changed to something else. And then they told us on your recommendation, maybe not you, but your administration's recommendation, it would become a community lot. And I said, "Guys, a community lot opens up the door for everyone in the North Shore that we know that doesn't use the Tobin Bridge, to come flood our parking lot, park there for $7, $10 a day, take a shuttle over to Wellington Station." And it just becomes a lot for everybody that wants to use Everett as a parking lot.
It's only a certain amount of hours you can... It's only a certain amount of hours you can park in that lot.
Six hours, I believe. I think six hours.
Is it six or four? Yes, yeah. So, I mean, someone who's parking there to go to work, they'll get ticketed, so...
And it's only if they have enough enforcement to be able to do this. I mean, we talked to, you know, several parts of this package.
Well, they don't enforce that because they're charging, so they'll enforce it, you know?
I don't wanna take all my time, my colleagues. I have some other questions we can talk about off the record here tonight. I think this is a great start. I'm just saying that I think Ward 6 really needs to be carefully looked at more thoroughly because of what I'm hearing from residents.
Parking and traffic is our only concern with the entire resort. That's, I mean, there's no other concerns. I have no other concerns about crime.
I agree.
Any other issues. The only, the only issues, the only concerns I have is it always about traffic and parking. And we're gonna be as diligent as possible. But sometimes it's, you know, we don't wanna really jump the gun and all of a sudden create this entire district off of Main Street. Because there are people who use the...
I don't think you have to do the whole Main Street. Maybe you just added layers and start seeing where layers go. And then you might maybe move, maybe move beyond...
Like Officer Gaff says, our Sign Division, our Public Works personnel won't take us much. Actually, I think I was telling Mr. Monti that we should have the signs all ready to go. Have the signs sharp, just build the signs, the poles.
In the village, we know what is...
And then if we find an issue that's happening, we can just, just get right at it.
We know how bad the village has been hammered from the school. And there was nothing we could do about that, right? And so all these other issues are coming up. And I'm hearing from people that they do wanna see some action now, not then, so...
Yeah, we can definitely go back and sit and talk and maybe even try it on a few streets or something and have a conversation, engage the business community in Main Street. I mean, does anybody else have any ideas on Main Street? What they'd like to see? Love to hear them. I think we'd all love to hear them.
I'll say, Councilor. Have Councilor Capone, then Councilor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to our guests. Thank you very much for all the work and for the slide. We all understand it's a huge undertaking. It's gonna be new. And as much as we wanna be proactive, I think in large part, it's gonna be trial and error. And we'll do what we know for sure, which looks like you've done. And we'll kind of see how it goes. I'm glad to see that we've got the ability for quick response, too. So if we do notice that there are hotspots, which I would, I would think that probably just north of the Rotary probably could be a potential hotspot, in the beginning, anyway. Maybe over time, if things kind of die down a little bit, it won't be as big an issue. But I can definitely see Main Street up to Towson Oaks on both sides. I can see Broadway up to Second. I can see Gladstone Street being an issue. So obviously, we just keep an eye on it and go from there. And with Main Street, I totally get it. The one thing that we always talk about is we wanna make sure that we have the parking for residents. At the same time, we can't shut out the business community completely. So there's a balance in there. So to jump on it right away, to your point, it might be overkill. So as long as we kind of keep an eye on it and address it as quickly as possible, I think that's probably the best way to go.
We could make, we could meter Main Street now. And so businesses still will have the ability, the customers can still go to a metered spot. And we can just allow resident parking stickers to park in a metered spot without paying. So Councilor Hannah was on Main Street. If he wanted to park in a metered spot in front of his home, he could for free. If I wanted to go to get a haircut at Otavio's, I guess I'd have to feed the meter, which I won't be happy about. But, well, I actually have a meter, I have a meter sticker. I can park for free. But, so we could, we could do, you know, if that's, I don't know, is there, do the meters go all the way down to Broadway to in front of the school by your home, Fred? I think they, they stopped. So we could, we could just extend the meters all the way down and allow resident stickers to park in those metered spots. And we could do that. I could get those meters in place on, before opening on Broadway and Main Street. If that's something that this council thinks will, I, you know, listen, I think it would be beneficial. And we, by allowing Everett residents to park in those spots, we're not asking for any money. We're just preventing people...
Yeah, which is good. It wouldn't hurt the residents at all. And then, I guess, then the debate becomes, is it someone who's visiting a business or are they pumping quarters in the meter and going down to the casino? But I guess the kind of turnaround time, you really wouldn't be able to be there that long before your meter kicked up. It's like a two hour limit or something.
Right, we'll just do a two hour, we'll allow them to feed it remotely. There are meters that you can feed remotely, add hours, so we won't allow that to happen. So if someone can't sit there all day in a spot.
Yeah, yeah. And then the only other question I have is with Lewis Street. I know you've got the no casino parking signs. Is that the entire length? Is it just lower Lewis as opposed to upper Lewis on the opposite side of 16? Kind of concentrating on the lower part for now?
Right now, we're concentrating on the lower side of 16 because that would be the logical place for somebody who's circling, looking. They've gone out the Parkway, their first right is Lewis Street.
Yeah, it'd be easier to walk without having to cross over 16, so. I guess it'll just be another area we'll have to keep an eye on and just monitor, but...
And like I said, we do have a significant plan in place to ensure, like, we'll be bringing in additional parking enforcement personnel on nights and weekends, particularly during the opening session, whatever that opening session means, to ensure that there's compliance with this. So it's not gonna be, because currently, right now, we don't have PEOs that work on weekends. Well, starting June, the first weekend in June, they'll be working weekends and they'll be out enforcing and getting that information out. So, and again, with our corporate partners and our Traffic Division, the PEOs, I think we're gonna evaluate. And again, if you're getting feedback from your constituents that says, there's a specific problem here, let us know. And then we can send someone down and evaluate that for it. This is a continuing process. I've said this before, we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
But we do know we have a plan and we can react, as the mayor has said, and adapt rather effectively to resolve the situation in a short term.
Yeah, and to the point, I think it's, it's actually great. The residents are probably gonna be the best source of information as to what's going on on the streets. And we'll just do the best we can with it. So I appreciate the effort that went into it. It's a huge task. I don't need to tell you that. Do the best we can and we'll work with it. That's all you can do. So I do thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Florio, DePiero, and then Paul Tino, and then Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of my questions have been answered. I just had one question. I know you said you send all the information out to the owners and not the tenants. Is there other pamphlets that you've given out? Because sometimes the owners don't tell the tenants things. So that's not fair to them. They're paying high rent. So is it possible for whatever you send the owners, I'm not saying to send it to every tenant, but at least put pamphlets or something in their doors?
I thought we sent every registered vehicle a letter.
We sent it to the residents, to the residents.
Everyone who had, so we, we know everyone who does have a resident sticker in that area.
Correct.
Did we not send them a personal letter?
No, I think we sent it to the residents.
We can do that. So everyone who has and exists...
The landlords, the landlords don't tell the tenants. That's not...
I thought that was something that I had brought up in one of our original meetings. We will make sure that everyone who has a sticker now gets notified by us.
Yeah, the 70s, they'd already got it. Obviously, you don't have to send it out. So it won't be as many if there's 170 down there.
We're just sending a notice to everyone in the Lower Broadway District who has a registered vehicle, a letter to come up to immediately replace their sticker.
Okay.
Eventually, that will be all done online, but I think you can do it online, but...
As far as the residents on Main Street, you know, we wanna make sure that the business people are all right. And I know you said something about the meters being two hours, which isn't a problem because if they're in a restaurant, they can come out and feed them for another hour. If they're gonna be there more than two hours.
It's a big meal.
There could be a party. They could have a community union party.
True, no, I'm just kidding.
You could be at a Sonia Plaza having a fundraiser, Mr. Mayor. So there are areas where they could probably use more than two hours, but they'll have to come out and feed the meter. Because I definitely don't wanna see the business people hurt. Main Street is tough. I know, I was there. It's tough.
You brought a good point, I mean, Sonia Plaza. I mean, if we do meters and only do two hours and allow, that's a, it's a great point. You know, so that's kind of the dilemma that we're facing. But we're hoping someone that wouldn't walk from Sonia, but you got a good night, they probably would if they can't get a, if they can't get a spot at the resort.
So it's a catch 22. So you, you know, and like I said, I think people that are going to the resort, this is a high end resort, all right? They're gonna go there and gamble. You think they're really gonna worry about spending $42 for parking?
Well, I'm sure you're gonna get all types of people at first. I mean...
At the beginning, most of, you know, we have shuttles everywhere. The young kids say, I hate to say, I hope they don't get offended, but they're lazy. My kid takes a car on the corner, go buy a pack of cigarettes. You think he's gonna walk to the casino? But anyways, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of my questions have been answered. I thank you all for your time and the Traffic Commission's time as well going into this. I have gotten some feedback for some business owners down the line area. They were very appreciative that you guys did come down and speak directly to them. But one concern that was raised to me and they mentioned they spoke to you was, let's say, if a car gets towed overnight to one of these garages or auto body shops and they can't get into their lot because of a gate or whatever reason, what would happen? Is there gonna be some kind of a loading zone where a car can get dropped off in front of the gate and not be bothered or towed away? Is there any idea for protocol with that instance?
That was something we talked about with some of the businesses down there. And that's some of the, you know, in the pilot program, there's some flexibility in here. And that's some of the small things that we're trying to tweak out a little bit. Yeah, we're trying to help them down there because of they've been hurt so bad with the construction.
They were very appreciative that you folks went down and talked this out with them and let them know what was going on.
We did. We wanna know how we could help them. And that was one of the questions they had was if a car was dropped off and how are they gonna get a visitor's pass to them? And we got all that. And, you know, we're floating some ideas by maybe, you know, that's, that's probably one of the toughest questions we have. What do we do with someone's, you know, for the auto body shop? And, you know, we are throwing some ideas on that, Jake.
Yeah, with respect to the businesses in general, the issue is not so much the customers. It's those types of issues, it's the employees, it's these special, you know, things that, you know, functions that they do that require all that finesse with how we apply the program. And so that's where a lot of the time, really, I think that you spent, that Mr. Gaff has spent, and myself, is trying to understand those better so that we don't really hurt anybody, that we don't have to...
I mean, the number one plan right now is, the nice thing is that the police department is 24/7. So if we know they get near, they can always call dispatch. And dispatch can be okay to give parking consideration for mass reg, A, B, C, D. And it's done quite often if there's, you know, things happening in neighborhoods. We can have, you know, we can have that ability to do that, to tell the PEOs, hey, give courtesy to this car. It's being dropped off with mechanical issues. That's something that, you know, we're probably leaning towards because we are open 24/7. And it's one phone call, radio dispatch, or text to the PEOs, and that solves that. So that's the way I think we're leaning towards.
Maybe we could help the businesses out, too, with some signage that, you know, tow companies, if dropping off car, call this number.
Yes.
Kind of thing. And thank you for your work on that. Another concern from constituents was not on you guys, but parking at, let's say, Wellington Station is hard enough to park getting to work. But I don't foresee a big rush of people going to a casino at 7:00, 8:00 in the morning. It's when those lots are empty at nighttime. So I know that's not on you guys, but just a public concern. And with my colleagues, same thing on Main Street. I can't see how you do resident parking, you know, all the time. We have two funeral parlors on Main Street, Sonia Plaza Restaurants. If you do maybe perhaps some kind of time limit, but to do strictly resident would cripple some of these businesses. And we can't have that. I understand the need to be proactive, but this is trial and error, working things out. You know, the sky's not falling here. We need to see how things work out and work those kinks.
And one of the things that we talked about was also for Main Street, and we understand there's some issues there. They've been hammered probably for the last eight months with that, you know, gas line construction, you know? And for us to all of a sudden come in and hammer them right away when the project's gonna finish within the next two weeks and hammer them again, we took that into a lot of consideration in talking with the businesses. And there's so many mom and pop shops and little places that just rely on that parking. So we did take that and, you know, Councilor Capone and all, everything he's said in the past with us, we've taken that. But that construction that was going on there, it was, Mr. Hanlon can tell you. I spoke to him many nights at 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, 1:00 o'clock in the morning as he's just watching the bulldozers go back and forth in front of his house because he couldn't sleep with the jackhammer going, so...
He's up late anyway.
He's up late anyway, so...
They don't sleep anyways.
But, but that was one of the reasons, too. I mean, we, Mr. Monti talked a lot, it's just with that construction, all of a sudden coming back and hammering with something else. The nice thing about the pilot program and everybody said the flexibility that we have to maneuver, we have the pieces in place. If we need to hit hotspots, and that's the key word, we use the hotspots all over. I think we can attack them pretty quickly, aggressively, and in the right way.
And like the captain said, we don't know what we don't know. So thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Councilor Paul Tino, and then Councilor Hanlon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Captain Landry, outside of cap, Monti. First of all, good presentation, you know? So I'm glad to hear that we've got the issue down in Lower Broadway addressed. We're in a position to be able to make adjustments. Residential parking's been addressed. That's excellent. I know there's been a lot of discussion here about Main Street, and that's understandable. There's a lot of businesses on Main Street. But let's also keep in the conversation Chelsea Street and the Parkway. Because both of those streets run parallel, it's also a quick X, quick way to be able to get to the casino. And as a resident in that area, I can tell you, it's a lot quicker than most people might think. You need to shoot down, self ferry, walk down the Parkway, you're in, you're down, and then over the bridge, you're in the village. I mean, the line. So, yeah, keep that in mind as well. We're gonna need that flexibility. I mean, again, I understand why you're not launching a citywide program right now. I've had mixed comments from residents in both down on the Main Street area and on the Chelsea Street Broadway area. You know, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. You launch a program, people aren't happy with it, you're, you've got complaints. People parking in their driveways or in front of their houses, they're gonna complain as well. So I honestly understand you're gonna wait and see to what you need to be adjusted there, and that's fine. Just one thing, I just wanna, I mean, Councilman Capone mentioned it, but I think I'm actually looking at it a little deeper than this. We talked about Lewis Street. I just wanna see, I just wanna add, is the Lewis Street signage, is that strictly for Lewis Street? Or are we talking about the Lewis Street area? Again, having served that area quite a while, a very common method that people utilize Richie's slush is to come around and park in those spaces on Bailey Street. So again, we need to have that equal signage on Bailey and Power Street because that's gonna be... If they got to come down Lewis to see the signs that they can't park, when they make the turn, they're gonna see neighborhoods where there are no signs if you don't have the signage. That's where they're gonna dump their cars. And if they can park over in those parking spots on Bailey Street, cut through the fence and walk up to the Rotary, you've got, you've got, you've got a space there that needs to be addressed as well. So I would ask that the signage be equally dispersed around those two streets as well. And if you're familiar with this, you know the logistics of it.
Absolutely.
You have, you, you can't go down there and not miss the fact there's no signs once you pass by the signs, so... But other than that, you know, again, my biggest concern has been what I, would seem to be the wave of cars that are gonna be hitting, impacting up from the Rotary, the rest of Everett. Now, again, maintaining some adjustments as needed, that's addressing those concerns. If there's a problem, which we can't, and with any certainty say that it's gonna happen, but it could, you're in a position to be able to address it. And that's what I'm mainly concerned with. Other than that, my, most of my, any of my questions have been answered. So I'm glad, again, good job. I know, we appreciate the effort. And I also understand the need to hold back until we heard what Encore was gonna be doing. Because without the knowledge and knowing about the silver line, the shuttles, all these other options, the parking. You know, I mean, they say six hour parking. I don't know about you, but when I gamble, it doesn't take me six hours to lose all my money. So, you know? And it won't take most people either. So I don't think that's gonna be a concern. But, you know, again, my concerns are addressed because I see a position, a program in place that's, works in concert with what Encore is already launching. And in that respect, again, I commend you. Just watch for the adjustments because that's where my concerns lie. When we, because it is, we're a small city. I mean, I couldn't tell you logistically how far the casino is from downtown Everett Square, but it's probably about a mile and a half. You can walk a mile and a half in 20 minutes, 25 minutes, is that about right? Yeah, so you can walk a mile and a half in 20 minutes. You don't need to take a car. But this is where people who aren't familiar with the city will think of it as an easy way to ditch their car, an easy way to ditch their car, jump on the tee if they don't know about the shuttle service, or even ditch the car on Webb Street and jump on the shuttle service, we've got to be ready for these, these, these elements because this is going to be overwhelming, potentially overwhelming situation, because, thank you, you sounds like you're on top of it.
We're trying, but the one tool that we do have is the ability to monitor tickets, so the first, you know, the first part of this program, pilot program, you know, we're going to meet, you know, we're meeting with wind the day after opening, we have our first staff meeting scheduled already to go over things, but we can, you know, great job by our partners from the company was to monitor the parking tickets, so if we see that a lot of resident parking tickets, non-resident parking tickets are being generated in a hotspot, that's a great key for us, that all of a sudden, you know, we have a baseline of how many tickets were written and all of a sudden we see a flex up to almost double or more, now we just spotted a hotspot, now we can attack. So that's one tool that we're definitely going to be using, that we can keep an eye on to see how flexibility that, that those areas are going to go with the hotspot, so that's something we're going to keep an eye open to, so that's a great tool for us.
And this is one other thing that's come from the residents that I've spoken to over the past couple of weeks, currently, if we've got a car that's illegally parked, blocking the driveway or anything like that, we call, officer comes down, generally it seems, and again, I could be wrong, but it seems from the perspective of some of the residents that calls are made to try to get the car to move, move before it's actually hooked and moved. And again, that, under normal circumstances, the courtesy is a plus, under the potentially overwhelming situation that can arrive, you don't have the time to extend that courtesy. If a car is illegally parked or blocking a driveway, you know, what's going to be the process, are we going to, are you going to be able to get in there and hook it, move it, or are we going to, are we going to go through the same type of courtesy process we go through right now?
In the, in the Lower Broadway area or up in other areas? I mean, if we see a blue sticker on it and it's a resident.
Lower Broadway, you've got coverage.
Coverage.
I'm concerned about the neighborhoods that we're going to be watching to see if there's an additional need to do more, because that's where my concern, we're going to be impacted. And again, until it happens, you know, no one's going to be sure who's right, who's wrong, and it's not about being right and wrong, it's about being proactive and again, I think you, you've already mentioned you're able to analyze the situation, you can be in that position to be proactive, but again, when cars get blocked, get in there, I've got, I hate to put this in a personal, but I have a situation where I have a truck that always parks across my driveway to go into the social club next to my house, my tenants go out, they argue, they swear, they go back and forth, okay? I know if, and I've told my tenants, if they block in the driveway and they're on the street, call Everett Police, that's the process, don't mix it up with them, they'll get the message when the car's gone and they're going to pay to get it, to get it, to pick it up from a tow yard. But, you know, I just need to know that, how we're going to be operating in those type of, those type of situations, Lower Broadway, you've got to cover it, I know you'll be, you'll be aggressive work down there, it's the potential overflow that I'm worried about and I'm concerned with.
So, just, as a generality, officers will run the plate to see if it's somebody local because we don't want to, like, I came, I stopped by my friend's house, there was no parking, I dropped by really quick, we don't want to negatively impact, but if that car comes back to somewhere outside the city or some other location, then generally that car gets tagged and towed and pulled from there and that's the general process. Now, if we can get that car moved because they're in a house across the street, then we'll do that, just as a courtesy, because it is pretty fairly a big hit in the pocket, because I think the average tow now is a, is $160.
Yeah.
Just, the minute they hook it, that's $160 and then, once it gets to the yard, there's an hourly storage fee and again, our goal is not to, like, negatively impact our Everett residents, but we also want to keep the free flow of traffic and keep things going, so we generally do that, but again, if it's outside the city, then it gets tagged and then gets towed and then we're off, so.
So there's some discretion.
Yes.
On the officer, so it's not just cut and dry, pull up, tie up, pull them off? All right, that's fine.
And I will say, sometimes we do ask, like, the resident that called in, do you want us to tow it, and sometimes they will actually say, no, just ticket it for now, but if I need to leave and the car's not gone, I'll call you back and we will do that as well.
And I'll keep that in mind because if that pickup truck that keeps parking my driveway, if I'm able to bag them, I'm going to request it get towed.
And if it's a common problem and it's the same truck all the time, just notify us and we can send a letter or we can make contact with them as a proactive and say, hey, stop parking there also, we've done that too for some businesses.
Okay, no, thank you very much, like I said, I think this is going to complement what we've already heard already and, good luck with the implementation, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm the last first time speaker and a lot of my questions have been answered, you know, but, you know, I did attend your traffic meeting last week and there's a lot of people that were there, a lot of people know me and especially where you pointed me out that I was there, so they've been calling me and I explained to them exactly what you told me to say, you know, how you told me to say it and everything, but they coined a new phrase and that's, yeah, but what if? And that's what I told them, you know, I said, simply write down everything on a piece of paper, word by word, talk over with your friends and your neighbors or your workers and everything, you know, have a little debate about it and then go back and go up and say, Mr. Gaff, I said, Officer Gaff, you know, and he'll, he'll, he'll do that and he'll, he'll work with you, he's going to try to make it as best as possible, but I've got people that, you know, their mother is a housewife and they, they fix someone's apartment, you know, they, they do wallpapering, they wash floors, these are their families, you know, they own a lot of houses, a lot of property down there, so we have to consider those people that are coming down too, you know, and there are people that have, you know, three or four workers that are going to be in that area too, so we have to consider them too. But anyway, so I'm sure they'll be, they'll be contacting you and I told them, I also said, if you need help, I'll, I'll go with you to, to see you, you know, but the other thing, do you know how much the towing, I mean, the parking is going to be in the outdoor area?
So officially, we have not set that rate yet, we are working with the operator that's going to be operating the lot to set that rate, but, and don't hold me to this, it's going to reflect generally what the rate is in the casino, so.
My only question was, I know, it's, it's going to be $42 to park in, in the, in the resort itself, so, I mean, if it's, and I don't think, I don't want it to be $42 outside because then I'm just going to say that, well, I'm just parking the wind, I'll pay if I get $42, so, I mean, I would think I'd get like, get a $10 break or something, whatever.
Yeah, and we're talking that over, what is the appropriate discount that there should be across the street, what I think we're struggling with too is that, with all this parking, parking equals traffic on the street, right, so what's the appropriate balance of, you want to capture those cars and get them off the street, you also don't want to encourage more people to drive there knowing they can park, because then you've just, you know, increased the congestion on Broadway. So I think, you know, for the opening period, knowing that there's going to be a lot of heavy, you know, demand for this lot, we will probably charge something similar to what the casino is charging and we'll probably reevaluate after a month, two months and decide if that appropriate, should we be adjusting that to meet whichever goal we feel is, is most appropriate to meet at that point.
Okay, and the other thing I was looking at, the resident sticking parking only sign, I'm not going to go down there because it's going to be so crowded, but I go down a year later and I come to this sign that says, resident stick and park only, I have a resident stick to park, I'm going to park there, but it's not the resident.
So there's a couple of variations of signs and one of them will be resident Lower Broadway and it'll be a specific color, so if you've got a Lower Broadway sticker, you can park there and then there's the exception to the parking that we're making on Line Street for every other resident, so if you have a different color resident parking sticker, that's not a Lower Broadway, you can come down there, park on Line Street for two hours free of charge and you won't be tagged or towed.
Are people going to know this, are they going to recognize it?
Yes, absolutely, we hope they do.
That was one of the mayor's requests, that we give some free spots to the Everett Residents Day, he was huge in that and that's where we found the best spot because we wanted to keep missing, but the mayor wanted some free spots for people to come down to enjoy the resort, you know, the waterfront and not have to pay the big money or, you know, they couldn't and, and that was something that we, we found and it's, Line Street was the best fit for it, so that would be publicized also and.
And Mr. Hanlon, we are willing to work with, like, if somebody go, like, say you go down there and you park in the wrong space and you get tagged for it, if it was an honest mistake, we'll work with the parking clerk's office, we're, you know, what we're trying to avoid is, you know, a comment I heard from Counselor Matuski is that a car with Alabama plates parking on Lower Broadway in the, in the residence zone, what are we going to do? Well, you know what, we're tagging and towing it because it's not an Everett resident unless maybe you rented, or Hertz rent a car and it's got an Alabama plate, but our goal is not to negatively impact the residents of our city, it's actually to make it better and easier for them and provide them somewhere to go.
I'm not concerned about parking because, as you know, I can walk down.
It's good exercise too, by the way.
Another thought, you know, we're talking about Lewis Street, you know, about having the thing over there, what Counselor Matuski was concerned about, and around the corner of Lewis Street, there's a place that makes ice cream, a slush rather, and they have a very large parking lot and also if you turn around and just go one block, you go over on the second street, there's lots of large lots about there. What we do is people starting to open up their lots for parking, to say, you know, casino parking, I go to, I go to fairs and events in all the New England states, sometimes in New York too, and every time you go, there's a big event in that park, but every driveway across the street has parking for $3 or $5 or whatever it is, you know, how can we handle that, or maybe we should let them do that, I don't know.
So I was looking for Tony Susa because he'd be the person to.
I think the Board of Alderman, doesn't the Board of Alderman handle opening parking? Yeah, okay, well, that would be us to do, but you know, if they cover all the guidelines, what they're supposed to do, how can we refuse, you know?
Right, so I was looking for Tony Susa because actually if it's a private lot, it comes down to a zoning issue, is my understanding, so I don't believe there's anywhere down there that actually allows parking as a primary use, so that is not enforceable by ISD, by, you know, City Hall. I think generally we don't want that to happen, I think that's my, that's my opinion anyway, you know, again, encouraging more folks to provide parking simply drives more traffic down Broadway and on the highways, so to the extent we can, as Mr. Fulk explained, get them on shuttles, get them on other modes, I, I think.
I, I look at these places as a money-making proposition for the people that own it and if they have to, you know, they get together and they hire a bus that'll do a route every hour or half hour or something or other, you know, maybe even the resort would want to do that, you know, but anyway, I think that was my last question too.
Last, okay.
It was, thank you very much, General.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a couple of questions from the chair, believe I had to go on last, my question is 72 hours for the visitors pass, I'm just curious, why do we go 7, it seems like a long time, 72 hours?
We talked about this and 72 is if you have a resident come in, you know, someone comes in for a long weekend, holiday weekend, and that's what we decide, that would be the 72, Friday to Monday on a holiday weekend, that's why we did the 72 hour period.
And that would be 72 contiguous hours, like, you put your car there and it just sat there for three days? Now, if you put your car there, you're visiting and then you skewed off somewhere, you go into Boston or to the North Shore and your car's not parked there and then you come back later that night and park, the 72 hour clock starts again.
We're also going to, we're also monitoring that, so the PEOs, the parking enforcement officers will have a log and they're going to be down that area and they will monitor the visitors passes, if they see the same car parked there, we just don't want roommates sharing, you know, moving in, giving the visitors pass and they don't have to register the car here because their family lives, you know, somewhere and insurance is lower, but the PEOs are going to keep an eye and make sure that the visitors passes are monitored, that's our biggest thing and also we have talked to the people in the, we do have the $300 if you, you know, misuse the visitors pass and the sticker, I mean, it is a $300 fine and you can, and you can lose your privilege for a sticker and a visitors pass up to a year, so there is some teeth into our city ordinances regarding that, that if they, you know, misuse it and don't use it the right way, they'll definitely be taken away, but you can also fine them to 300 and lose the privilege for a year, so there is some, you know, teeth in that that if we have to.
Okay, and the other question was, Counselor Perry will hit on this also, when people come out and see their car gone, and to take the pressure off your station from getting phone calls, I notice the signs don't say who is the tow company itself, I think Quealy has the contract?
We have too, so we have Paul's and Quealy's, so if it's towed out of the private lot run by the city, they're going to probably.
That's a question right now?
Yeah.
That the chief has, so we understand that Quealy's has a contract with Encore for towing on their property, the question is, if it's Lower Broadway, we have a split contract, one week it's Paul's, next week it's Quealy's, we're actually looking for that answer now and I don't know if you have the answer, about that public parking lot that is owned by the casino but being managed by the city.
Is that the one across the street that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, under the operator's contract, they will, you know, hire a tow company, so that information would be posted in the lot, obviously there can be a tenant there at the lot so somebody can, you know, ask one of those folks.
I don't want the phone calls going to the station, you, you get enough phone calls, you don't need the towing phone calls also. And my last question was actually a comment, I'd like to see, we could talk about it later, let's say I have a meeting after the opening, have you guys come back and we could get a review of what happened and the good points and the bad points, hopefully it's all good points, just how the opening day went or the opening week, is this, I'm not sure when our meeting is after that, how far after, if it's a week or two weeks after that, but definitely have a meeting to kind of get us updated on how it went.
I think Cap, if we can request a month maybe, so that would give us a real, I mean, if you do two weeks, we won't have a real and we'll still be really busy down there and, and I'm not saying it's not busy to come here, but I think a month would give us, we'll be in the middle of July then, so I don't know if you're in session still, but.
May have to be a special, I think we may be on break at that point, we'll, we'll see what happens, but.
Whatever, but yeah.
We can arrange it a month after.
Yeah, we would need a month so we could.
If it's a special meeting, something that's important where.
Yep.
We want updates so the people watching could see.
Absolutely.
How it went and everything, the progress went and everything.
Yep.
Okay, I'm, I have Counselor McLaughlin, second time around, and Counselor Florio.
So Sergeant Gaff, my question is, what are we going to do to raise the number of employees for parking enforcement? I know that we're already have numbers down on parking enforcement for overnights and we're not able to hit the whole city now because I know one individual has been out for a long-term medical leave and I believe there's one vacancy in that department. Are we, is there a plan to raise the number of employees that are going to be hired to enforce these rules?
I believe there is, there is discussion and we have changed, we've had a great, the mayor's office met with the PEOs and restructured their schedule and they were in favor of it, so we get coverage now with everything and the weekend coverage and we're working with them to make sure everything's covered and that's one of the free, that's one of the flexibility, we got to see how the weekends go and that is something that is being discussed with hiring more for weekend coverage, but right now with the, with the help of the PEOs and understanding what's going forward, they've worked with us and worked with the city.
Do you know how many PEOs we have?
So changed the schedules to help us stretch them out a little bit farther to help us and that just was done this week, so PEOs have been great with switching their schedules and weekend coverage, so it's.
Do we know how many PEOs we have on staff right now?
There's eight.
There's eight individuals right now, so they're going to presumably cover 24 hours around the clock for seven days a week, okay, that's fine. And the other thing I've just heard from some of the business owners is that what they saw, you know, one of our local restaurants in Lower Broadway had it closed because they virtually could not get customers to their facility any longer and we even tried to help out, out what a 15-minute parking through the traffic commission and that didn't even help and they just had to close their doors unfortunately and we heard that. Some of the restaurants down there say, we'd rather have our customers inconvenienced a little bit than not have them be able to get to our facility at all and that's something that I've heard from multiple businesses owners down on Main Street and I walk Main Street businesses almost daily, I talked to a couple of the restaurant owners that are close friends of mine, they, they feel like they're going to be trapped in their own business and not be able to get cars to their, one is on, you know, very close to the Rotary has a large dining room area and he says, you know, if I can't get customers here, it does no, mean no good to open my doors and that's something that they're very concerned by, so I think that this is going to be something that's going to come up relatively quick that is going to have to be relooked at and that's what I hope that, again, I think you did a great job on Lower Broadway and the traffic commission did a great job on Lower Broadway, I just, honestly for me, I'm not satisfied with Ward 6 in the Main Street section, I think the mayor hit the nail on the head, the only issue that has arisen right now is traffic and parking for the city, but I do thank you guys for your due diligence and I think you guys are working very well on this problem, but I think it's a bigger problem that some people want to acknowledge, not you guys.
I appreciate the, you know, we did work hard at it and that's what we said at the beginning, it's not going to be a lack of effort or trust and, and we know there's going to be some things that we're going to have to change and, and coming back to this board and if you see within the first week or something that needs to be addressed, that's why the captain put our contact information and I know all you've contacted me at one point in the last few weeks and, I mean, few months, we'll get back to you and, you know, it might not be the answer you want right there and then, but we will get back to you and we'll put it on our schedule to relook at everything and that, and that's the dialogue that we need to keep going to keep this city going forward and parking has always been a number one issue in this city and, you know, we've taken on some big tasks before, we've had homecoming day parades where we shut down the city for six, seven hours, Broadway, Chelsea Street and everything, we get through it and we have the pieces in place to keep going forward and deal with these hotspots and, and we'll keep our dialogue going with you folks and seeing what we can do to help.
I'll say, Counselor?
Thank you.
Counselor Florio and Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also thank you for all the work you have done and we appreciate it. My biggest concern is the traffic, the first couple of days, I, the parking, we'll, we can, we'll deal with it, it's the traffic or how people are going to get through, so is there going to be different areas where you're going to have police officers, especially the Rotary, especially Main Street, Broadway, you know, you have churches, there's other things going on other than just the casino, graduation.
Captain will answer the whole operation.
So, so we, we have an extensive, robust law enforcement support package that includes So we, we have an extensive, robust law enforcement support package that includes Everett Police, the Massachusetts State Police, Boston PD, Chelsea PD, Medford PD are all involved, as well as these people with traffic management experience that I couldn't even begin to come up with. Because Boston Transportation has been involved in this, the Mass DOT has been involved, and you heard the folks from the Encore. We started this back, we started our official meetings in February, but we were talking before that. And so, we believe we have, well, they believe they have an effective plan in place. And we believe, as your police department, we have an effective plan in place that will help mitigate as much as we can the traffic issues. You know, we will continue to, you know, Sergeant Gaff and I talk every day about this. And both Sergeant Gaff and I will be standing tall at 0500 Sunday morning, ready to evaluate. And one of my, one of our roles is to continually evaluate while it's going on, to figure out where our holes are, and to push our resources and assets to fix that. And we have a significant number of Everett officers that will be on the ground.
Well, that's my question, because I know the Wynn people have already explained this, okay?
And, and I will tell you that-
But I want to make sure that the Everett is involved because-
We have more than, we have more than 12 that will be working there. I don't want to give you our exact deployment plan, because some of it is law enforcement sensitive, but I can guarantee you, we will have significant amount of officers, both in uniform and plain clothes, out there supporting this operation and ensuring the best possible outcome we can for this. You know, I, I heard the councilor say, well, what if? Well, my answer is, well, what if it all works? Because that's a potential what-if scenario as well. You know, if everyone listens to the, the casino's transportation plan, and they actually use the 2,600 parking spots that are over at Wellington and Station Landing, and take that free shuttle, or they use one of the other hubs, then the traffic may not involve into anything. And I can tell you today, because we continue to improve this, that as of this morning, from a meeting I went to, because I know a big concern is the bridge, and it's kind of off-topic, but I'll address it anyways, is that we've now limited the bridge openings on opening day to 6:00 AM, noon time, 6:00 PM, and then every two hours after that on opening day. So that should alleviate the traffic issues on Broadway coming in and out. And that took a lot of work, and I have to thank the Coast Guard who aren't with us tonight, but the Coast Guard helped us resolve that issue because that, that is actually a code of federal regulation that needs to get up and changed by somebody with a lot more power and authority than I have. So much thanks to them. And that should help us, at least, with some of the concerns with traffic that way.
No, I, like I said, I know the Wynn people explained it, but I just wanted to make sure that the Everett Police Department was involved. Because we're Everett, we know Everett, we know the side streets. You know what I mean? Not that I don't feel the state troopers or anybody from anywhere else can do their job. I understand they can do their job. But, like, we, you know, you know the areas, you know the areas where people can take the shortcuts, the rotary. So there's, there's a lot. And that's what, my concern is more the traffic than the parking right now. So, but it looks like you all have it under control, and hopefully it all goes well. And if it doesn't, we'll fix it.
Yes, we will.
But let's not fix what's not broken yet.
That's right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And I think our last speaker is Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I know that they presented everything on Monday. There's somewhere between 117, 120 offices that are going to be around in the beginning. I think there's roughly about 7,000 parking spaces when you add everything up. But one thing that Councilor De La Sola mentioned, that I, I just wanted to have a little bit more follow-up on, is with the visitor passes. We talked about the contiguous hours. Now, how, how does that work? They issue the visitor pass, they come out, 72 hours if they do leave, it resets. How long is the pass good for?
So the pass is good for an entire year. It's issued for the year-
So the same vehicle could come and go?
As long as they're moving and they're not parking there permanently long-term.
Longer than 72.
And one of our issues too is, and it's something that Sergeant Gaff and I has talked about, is, you know, what if, you know, I'm a resident of Lower Broadway and I start renting out my parking pass? We're going to keep an eye on that as well, the parking enforcement, because they can write down on a log, this car has this parking pass on it, and it's been here. And if we see abuses, we will use that $300, and you lose your ability to park down on Lower Broadway.
Yeah.
We can't account for every, every nuance, but we're pretty smart and get some of the scams that people are trying to pull. And at the end, we want this to be a successful and safe and a fun event for everyone. They've got some amazing plans down there, and we want everyone to go down there, have a great time. And again, we encourage people not to drive there.
Yeah.
You know, if you're an Everett resident, don't drive. Hop on the shuttle.
Yeah, with lots of alternatives. So, the, the one other thing I'd ask you to throw in the mix, because you don't have enough to throw in the mix already, 72 hours might be a little bit long, maybe 48 hours. Because if they're leaving and resetting, you know, I'm sure we'll hear from the residents if 48 is too short. So, but I guess that'll be trial and error as well. So, and I already thanked you, you and everyone else for all the hard work. The one thing I do want to say publicly is I've contacted both of you individuals on more than one occasion, and you always respond quickly. So I have no doubt that you'll be responding to everything that happens here. So I thank you again for that. So thank you with regards to that. Mr. Monty, one quick question. I hope this doesn't segue into a separate meeting. It could. But with regards to the lot, my understanding is that it's owned by the casino, they're going to have the city manage it, the city's probably bringing out a company into-
Yep.
What's the financial range between the city and the third party?
So we have, this is probably, I think, an item for a future council meeting, we'll go into more detail about this, but the basic arrangement is that there's a fixed fee for operating the lot.
Yep.
They will subtract that fee from the overall revenue take, and they will, you know, write the city a check every month with, with this, you know, balance.
Okay.
That's, that's the general terms, and I'm happy to, you know, the next council meeting, get into more detail.
Absolutely. That could be for another night. So I do appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman.
There's no more questions?
Move to the guest.
To our guest. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
To refer the item back to sponsor?
No.
No, is it a continuation?
File.
Meeting in July? Indefinite period.
They'll move, they'll move to place on file.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Moved for adjournment?
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen.